Call the meeting to order, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call Jill.
Frank Carini.
Here.
Mark Verhalen.
Here.
Kelly Guinear.
Here.
Mike Dudzik.
Here.
Cheryl Steniglia.
Here.
Meredith Whitman.
Here.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining our July eighth meeting. Right to agenda items. Number four consent agenda. If there's no questions or objections, A through C.
Just want to thank Keith Ruffalo for all of his dedication and service to our district. He will be missed.
Here, thank you.
Anything else? So if not, obvious things passed on that one. Public input recess former portion of the meeting for entertain comments or questions on agenda items. You do have three minutes to talk, two minutes and 30 seconds. I'll raise my hand. That means you have 30 seconds to finish up. And right to the items here. Ms. Hibler? Again, you have three minutes. I'll raise my hand at two thirty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I presented two forms to you. I'm Janine Hibler, Oak Creek resident. And at the last meeting, I shared some concerns about the item to approve the revisions to the harassment, discrimination, and Title IX policies. There are several documents there, and it is very comprehensive. And I think the timing for this has placed some of the people that would like to review under, you know, the holiday vacation and all of that. So I'm requesting that the board really considers tabling that tonight and not taking action on that until the next meeting. And with that being stated, item number seven, you have review of upcoming school board meeting tentative agenda. And I'm requesting that the board considers adding additional, an additional date to what you have presented to accommodate the request to delay action item six D due to the Department of Education requesting that these revisions be made by August 1st. And as I review your item number seven D, you don't have another meeting before August 1st. So I'm requesting that you really consider delaying it and making a new date for that to be held before August 1st. Third, I'm asking that you add something to the upcoming agenda. Over the last school year, several BIPOC family members participated in focus groups, student focus groups, and parent focus groups. And I don't believe this board has been privy to all the results that are still pending for public release. They were completed sometime in April, and even the parents haven't seen it in its full review. So we're really disappointed once again that we're trying to be patient and work with you all, but you're not listening. So that's why I'm standing here today on behalf of those BIPOC families once again. And number four, I would really like you all to consider appointing a BIPOC representative for the vacancy. And we have been encouraging our BIPOC families to apply. So I do know that you do have someone from that community represented in your application pool. Thank you so much.
Bill? Again, three minutes.
Good evening. My name is William McIntosh, and I wanted to talk about the pool referendum a little bit. I don't think it's the right time to do this kind of expense. We're talking nearly $40 million, even though I see on here that there's another 1.7 million coming from somewhere, which is probably still taxpayer dollars. But with that, with that, and after taxes and fees and everything else that's not included in this referendum, it's still going to be more than $36 million. The other, I don't think a lot of the citizens really understood what they were reading and what they got when they, when they filled out these flyers that were sent out to everybody. The school up at the, at the high school, the main campus, all those students are going to be requested to walk down in a covered area now that we would have to pay for to have a swim class. And I don't know how many students are up there, some 1,500, 2,000? And I don't know how many of them will be using it, but they'll have to walk down there for gym class when they take that swim class. The students at the ninth grade campus, easy enough for them to go over to the pool area and have their class. But what we should have been looking at is, is doing a warm water pool at the high school. Not a pool for competition, just warm water, probably less than eight million, which was a budgeted, which was, we were told eight million would be the cost to redo that pool. None of those students at the high school would have to walk down to the ninth grade campus to, for swim class. You could still build the nearly $20 million pool and the building down at the ninth grade center. And all those people down there could still use that pool for their class. You could still have competition down there. All of our students, our swim teams could all be upgraded. And we could still save over $10 million doing that. The public could still come in and swim, not during the day. I'm totally against that. We had agreed on a referendum to build the football field with the track around it. And all of, all of us were told, you can walk around it on the weekends, you can use it, the public can use it, until we couldn't. When we were told, what we were told was that the public, the people who paid for that, were bringing their dogs on the track and spitting gum on the track. When I asked for proof of that, nobody up here ever showed me any. So what's going to happen down, when this pool is done and it's open to the public during the day? As soon as there's a complaint made by a citizen or a student or anything that's going on down there, it's going to be closed to the public, period. And more swim teams, more youth programs and all that that start renting it out, it's closed to the public. Everybody knows it. It's been happening, and it's still going to happen, no matter what we do. That's the truth.
Hey, anybody else like to address the board? Recovee formal portion of the meeting for board discussion and or action. Action item, appointment of Oak Creek Park and Rec Commission representative.
So with Darren's resignation, that leaves an opening on the Parks and Recs Commission. At this point, I will be taking nominations for any board member that would be interested in serving in that capacity.
I'd like to nominate Meredith.
I'd be interested in that.
Mike?
Well, so far I have Meredith and Mike. Any other recommendation, or any other nominations? Okay, so we have to move to a voice vote on this. So what you are going to be voicing is your choice either between Mike or Meredith as part of this Parks and Recs Commission. So we'll do a roll call.
Roll call? All right, Mike?
Mike.
Cheryl?
Meredith.
Meredith?
Can I refrain and go, or go last?
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, Mark?
Mike.
Kelly?
Mike.
I'm a Mike. Meredith? All right.
Hey. By a vote of five to one, Mike is the representative for the Parks and Recs Commission.
Congratulations, Mike.
Thank you. Thank you.
Look forward to your updates.
Authority, need a motion for authority of chief business, business and financial officer and superintendent to sign contracts to sell and or purchase real estate. Need a motion?
Verhalen moves to approve.
Steniglia seconds.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Motion's passed. Approval of the student academic standards for 2425, I need a motion.
Steniglia moves to approve the student academic standards as presented.
Guinear will second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Motion's passed. Approval of revision of harassment discrimination entitled policies? Nine policies, excuse me. Any motion?
Steniglia moves to adopt the following recommended policy changes. New policy 300, revised policy 410, revised policy 411, new policy 411.1, revised policy 511, revised policy 512, and remove the current policy 512.1.
For second?
Verhalen seconds.
Discussion?
Yeah. I will not support this. It allows basically for transgender biological boys to access girl showers in locker rooms, which I view as morally wrong. I think that we're, that this allows it, by the way this policy is. In four months, this could change post-election. Why should we further invest in training? That may not be relevant. So far, there's 14 states and five federal district judges that have issued injunctions currently to stop this. As far as from moving forward, even though Wisconsin is not one of them, this continues up the legal, the legal line. And I think this is eventually going to get settled at a higher level. But right now, I think this, whatever they might as in training, just wasted money potentially. And feelings.
I like the scope of these policies. I think they're long overdue. I think that's going to help make things more clear for a lot of people. I like how they've been separated out. I'm some, in support of this.
We have had public comment twice on it. I haven't discussed that with anybody. I don't know if anybody has any thoughts based on the public comment on it. Should table it?
What? Yeah, sorry, go ahead, Meredith.
No, I mean, I'm not sure what the, you know, newer board member, I don't know what the policy is.
It's a good, it's a good question. I guess I'm looking for more insight because, I mean, I think it's a 1,500 page policy, you know, document.
If I could just maybe, I have a few talking points I'd like to share with the board.
Yep.
Especially in speaking to our legal counsel. So the Department of Education's August 1st, 2024 implementation deadlines is still in place in Wisconsin. And I appreciate the comments board members are making. Appreciate what Mike had shared. You know, as well as Cheryl, Meredith, and Frank. It's a couple, a couple of points to all of this. Obviously, we know that there's some different lawsuits and court orders dealing with the new regulations. The most important thing to know about that is that none of them currently apply to our jurisdiction. Therefore, the August 1st, 2024 implementation date still stands. Our legal counsel still recommends that the board adopt the policy as written. And we are continuously, and they are continuously monitoring lawsuits. In the event something changes that applies to our jurisdiction, they will recommend changes accordingly. It's also important to understand that if the board does not move forward with this by August 1st, there could be certain legal risks, risks associated with not complying. In other words, the Department of Education can pull the district's federal funding. Legal counsel was very careful in creating our Title IX policy that complies with the new regulations and provided no additional rights or responsibilities not specified in the regulations. As you reviewed the policy, you will notice that most of the changes relate to how reports, complaints must be addressed. The most controversial change that's included in the policy already existed in the current policy, and that was around the enclosure, the inclusion of gender identity under the new regulations. So those are just a couple of points I wanted to make to the board as you are considering what to do moving forward. Currently, right now, as, as Ms. Hibler had mentioned, we only have one board meeting in July. So if you were to consider tabling this, we would need to consider having another board meeting because we'd have to get this in place and ready to go by August 1st. One other, one other comment. What type of liability if we do implement this? Goes in a different direction legally? Do we have a liability in terms of a parent in this district's? That's because we allow it to happen. So we, you know, obviously, we, we deal with case by case basis. And we have done that already in a number of situations. I know I've spoken with Candace about a couple of students, particularly at the high school on that. So, you know, obviously, we have the direction and support of our legal counsel in the event that we do get sued, or if we do get sued, in terms of how they can guide us through the process and that. So I can't make any guarantees that that wouldn't happen. But that we do have protections with our legal counsel to help guide us through the process.
Whole thing is kind of a fluid issue anyway. So, I mean, from my point of view, if anything comes down the line state or federal or whatever jurisdiction, I mean, we can always amend or update or cancel the result.
That's true.
Redrawn. So I mean, this is just something, in my opinion, just cover us for the interim.
Well, the updates or tweaks that come down the road, I mean, obviously, you know, they're, they're monitored. Everybody's monitoring it, you know, it's, it's.
Far from finished.
Right. I, I agree. I agree, so.
I'd like to go on record that I'm not against the policy at all. I have concerns that we have a parent coming here numerous times to bring up concerns. I will also state, though, I have not received anyone reaching out to me since I have been sworn in at the end of April about harassment. So I would not be opposed to tabling it, but at the same time, this has been on the agenda for a month, and I haven't received anything beside the public comment, so. But, so I have, I have concerns. I'd like to see these BIPOC results. I'd like to hear more. I'd like to talk with Ms. Hibler if she's willing to contact me. Like, I'd like to hear more about that, but about the actual Title IX that we are talking about, I am in favor of.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I, I think there, I I guess I'm just concerned because there, there just seems to be, so Dan, can we back up for a second? You were talking about a policy, the most important one, that that was already in existence. And which one? Because all of these were redone, except there's just a new one. Correct? Policy 300.
300.
I believe, I don't have it right in front of me right now. I look at Troy, I don't know if that, that gender identity piece, was that part of the 411 policy?
It's part of 300, wasn't it?
The original Title IX.
Yeah.
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 So the main thing that changed is the procedures being required by the federal government for Title IX now. They've completely changed them.
The procedures.
Right.
A question from the last, the last meeting that we had. And I know I asked Troy, and this is one thing we're going to have to say in terms of if this would pass. If I'm a staff member and I'm going to ask the trainer, what if a biological transgender boy comes in and says he wants to take a shower with girls? Do we answer?
Thought that was a case by case.
We will handle it case by case.
Yes.
Absolutely.
It's literally six days ago, I think it was the state of Kansas. Policy 300, and it's still pending, but it's, that's all recent.
Kenosha School District lost a case, I believe it was in 23.
Yep.
That they were fighting, Whittaker versus KUSD.
Still not, still pending.
Yeah, so they've already lost. The district. Sure, the, it was a situation very much like Mr. Dudzik was talking about, where the student wanted to be treated different than his biological sex. And the district tried to make alternatives, but the student wouldn't accept it. The student wanted full treatment as his new gender or her new gender. I don't remember which. So for example, alternative bathrooms.
Yeah, no, but so.
They were not allowed.
Who lost the case?
Kenosha.
Kenosha, the school district.
Okay.
Yeah, the student won.
And as a reminder too, with the Title IX policy, and Troy, correct me if I'm wrong, but processes are combined for both students and staff, same policy.
Correct. I, I would wholeheartedly agree with Cheryl. The policies are all much better than they were. Regardless of philosophical belief of what's, you know, in.
Correct.
Other questions? We'll do a roll call. Mike?
No.
Darren?
Yes.
Meredith?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And I'm a yes also. Okay. Approval of the 202425 preliminary budget?
Steniglia moves to approve the budget as presented.
Need a second?
Verhalen seconds.
Discussion?
Right. This is just the stuff we worked on earlier this spring. This is put in the DPI format for the budget adoption. This will be integrated into the annual meeting. That'll be in August. That's, we are going to see a publication in the newspaper. They publish twice, two weeks before and then one week before the annual meeting. It'll include the place and time of the annual meeting and budget hearing as well.
Blaze, can we put like, you know, like, we're on that one page where the tax levy and history budget piece, where it says Fund 10, could you put, you know, can you put like for the public, like in parentheses, that that's the general fund and then like the names of the funds? Because not everybody.
Sure, that, that actually doesn't get published. That piece, that piece was more for your information and kind of see. We got the aid estimate on July 1. That's kind of the last piece of that puzzle.
Okay.
Full disclosure, that's an aid estimate that came on July 1. DPI is missing a bunch of data that they need to kind of get, which is basically our fiscal year end. They have to do that for 420 plus other districts. Fiscal year end expenditures is a key piece of state aid, because that's kind of what it's based on other than the actual total allocation of state aid. So once they have that piece, they'll certify everything. It'll be October 15th. And then we'll actually, the board will come together, and then we'll actually levy the final levy to the taxpayers of Oak Creek Franklin.
October 15th is actually the certification of the tax levy.
Yes.
Got it.
Yep.
That hasn't changed.
It's a certification of the state aid. And then at that next board meeting, which is usually a couple of days later, that'll be you guys certifying the actual levy.
That stayed the same, okay.
But I will admit that, so that attachment with the, the budget information, the posting, is very convoluted. It's actually prescribed by DPI, the, the different data that has to be shared. What, what really irritates me about it is that it's presented by function. So you can see undifferentiated curriculum, regular curriculum. I think the way we present our financials at the board meeting every month is by object, which is, I think, more resonates with people, salaries, benefits, transportation, interest, so. Little bit weird.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Blaze, for answering all my questions earlier today. Appreciate it.
Welcome.
Well, have you done anything, any more info on the, I know last meeting, I think you were talking about your, they were going to be looking at bus routes and how we might be able to consolidate or.
Yeah, we're working through that. That'll be for 2526 school year.
Oh, okay.
If there's efficiencies that we can find.
Yeah, we're, we're looking at that, so we're working with the right way.
I thought that was for this year. Thank you for the clarification.
Hey, all in favor say aye.
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 Post say nay. Motion's passed. Informational item, community feedback and draft on the pool resolution.
All right, so we have a couple of things that will be part of this informational item. First, we'll be providing a little community feedback from the engagement sessions that we do have, that we did have. Myself and Blaze and Heather will be kind of tag teaming on that. And then we will move into conversation around the, the pool resolution, which you've had a little bit of time to look at, that we need to move towards August 12th for, for final approval on that. So, so if we start with the community feedback piece, hold that up. So we've had three community engagement sessions so far. So we had one at June 5th at a community center, one in June 11th at the ninth grade center, and the last one was at the farmer's market on June 29th. At the community center for the June 5th, we had approximately, I would say about 25 or so people there. Good discussions, you know, some, you know, we'll talk a little bit more about what some of the feedback was, but there was good discussions around there, around some of the operational pieces, around some of the financing of the pool, things like that. So some good questions that came to us that made us think in terms of what we wanted to look at moving forward. Some suggestions on some of the renderings and possibility of potentially some changes, looking at the renderings and so on. The June 11th, the ninth grade center, we had about 17 adults there, but we had quite a few children there. We had a number of moms who brought their children in. That was one that was during the day where the community center one was in the evening. So again, a lot of good discussion there. Some of the same things that we heard from the June 5th meeting around operational, around financing, but also at the same time, a lot of support for it as well. And then June 29th at the farmer's market, we had a team there as well. And I, I don't know if some of you were there. We had maybe 50 or 60 people that I think stopped by our booth. Were very engaging and was all extremely positive. Again, good discussions on that, you know, we need to do this moving forward. The pool that we have right now is not working. So again, a lot of positive responses and conversations with people at the farmer's market, so. So some of the logistics and amenities, and I'll talk about this for a little bit, and then Blaze will talk about the, the financial piece. And then Heather will talk about the operational side of things. So some of the feedback that we got was, you know, the, the drop off areas in the parking. And I know we've had some discussion here as a board about parking, making sure that we have enough parking and that we're not encroaching too much into the Oak Creek Community Center. So we've been working with the city to take a look at some of the property at Miller Park. And we've looked at a couple of different scenarios there in terms of where we could potentially put parking there. So those are some of the suggestions that came through that. Matter of fact, that was one of the, I think, one of the first suggestions we had at our first Splash Squad meeting that Scott Kanek had, had suggested. So talking about an expanded scope, some of the other feedback that we've received from people in the community as part of these engagement sessions with our community room. For the community pool side would be a viewing window. So if I, if I was a parent and I was bringing my children in for a swim lesson or something like that, I'd like to be able to see, you know, for the most part, we're not going to have them sitting on the pool deck. And there's no seating up above in the community pool. So would there be an opportunity to have a viewing window so that we could watch our children as part of their swim lessons? Talked about a larger concession area, also talked about a concession area in the seating area. So if you remember, a seating area that we have for roughly 650 students is up top. So looking at the possibility of having a smaller concession up there, we already have the bathrooms, the elevator, and those types of things, you know, we have a smaller concession area up there as well. And I know that for some of us on the Splash Squad, when we were at Greenfield, they had theirs, they had a small concession area up there too. So something that was suggested. Scoreboard was obviously suggested as well. Some other amenities, hot tub, sauna, cold plunge pool, a waterslide, diving board. So we, again, we appreciate all that feedback. You know, at the same time, you know, as we go back to what our original mission was for, for this pool, I don't know if some of those actually fit within that mission and that. So, but anyway, they were, they were great suggestions and, you know, we, we take them to heart, so. And then plenty of family gender neutral locker rooms and shower stalls and that. So we've, we've heard that quite frequently, even on our visits to Racine and to Greenfield about having, you know, like a family room for families to be able to change in within the privacy of their own family and things like that, so making sure that there's enough of those. And again, the gender new, gender neutral locker rooms and stalls. And then the other, other piece that's come up, and I know we've had a couple of people mention this as well, is modifying the orientation of the, of the renderings and that. So, you know, if you're familiar with the, with the renderings, the way it is right now, it's, you know, that, that competition pool kind of runs north and south. We're talking, some of the suggestions have been about essentially, I guess, let's say Blaze, probably turning it 90 degrees or so and, and kind of extending it that way. And then maybe bringing it closer to the building or in some respects towards the back of the building. I don't know if you want to talk a little bit more about that, but that was one of the suggestions.
Yeah, just reorienting the building itself. So that, that's something we're looking at, seeing, that's, a lot of that's going to probably come out in detailed design, which is usually after the fact. But that's a time when we're going to see, you know, how, does it cost more? What are the cost benefits of it? And then the efficiencies that could be had. So something we're adding to the list and looking into.
With the 90 degrees, that would eliminate Miller Pond.
Uh, for parking?
Yeah.
Yep, that potential. Yep, that potentially-
Has the potential to do that.
We were looking at then having parking in the front. If, if that pool is set back to be almost equal, now you're the longer way between NGC and the high school, all the way into the back. And then you'd have ballway that would be opened up. Yep, and you could have parking there. The element that would have, one of the elements that would have to be worked out is, you know, obviously how the pool joins up to both buildings. It would be, it would have to be like a hall that goes back to the setback pool.
This would have to connect to the ninth grade to utilize that whole-
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, got it.
Plus, at the same time, still emphasizing the safety of students moving from the ninth grade center to the 10-12 building or vice versa.
And enclosed. Yep.
Other benefits beyond the parking, like of moving at 90 degrees?
Not asking the city to be involved? I would think, I would think, I don't, you know, Mark, is that your idea?
Yeah, that's kind of one of the reasons I-
I could be wrong.
Ask for a different scenario, having the building go east, west, south. If we don't have to, not that I don't like partnerships, but the more people you get involved in any mixture of building things or being in business together, whatever. A lot of times partners, partnerships don't work out. And I mentioned, I think Frank, that Miller Park was established a long, long time ago. Most of the people that lived to the north of there in the subdivision, I don't think would appreciate us going into the woods there and taking down all the mulled growth trees and making a parking lot. And then, and then besides that, if, if, if parking lot is on the backside of the school building, as we all know, there's no access to the back of the building unless you come in on Groveland and Eggway. So, I mean, anybody that comes here from another school district or another school, let's say, and they're looking for parking. I mean, if you live in Oak Creek, you'd know how to get to the back parking lot. Otherwise, you wouldn't. The building would be blocking it. So, it's kind of a misnomer to have separated from the rest. Then you have to worry about how people could access the building. You'd have to walk around in front of it. So, it, it's kind of a, first of all, it keeps, takes the city out of the mix. We don't have to buy property or we don't have to encroach on the park there. So, I kind of figure it would be a win-win. Keep the neighbors happy because I'm sure there'd be some pushback. Say we're going to take down half the trees and stuff in Miller, in Miller Park. I don't think that would work. But just, just something I suggested, it's something to look at. It's not that it's going to be actually installed. It's just some, another option to look at.
Thank you for explaining that, Mark.
Ready for the next one?
Yeah.
All right.
So, we're going to turn things over to Blaze about the financing.
Yeah, the comments we heard around financing was around the total debt that we have outstanding and then the pool debt that would be coming on. And just a feeling of, you know, that's a lot of debt load for Oak Creek Franklin. Then the debt repayment strategy, you know, leveraging the defecence into basically pausing that for the time period. Heard bad and great on that. So, people had a, a variety of feedback around that. And then one big thing, I, I think I've heard it probably a couple of times actually, was around, all right, so now we're doing this pool. What's next? And really, the response is that, well, there's really not anything next. This is kind of the last piece of that big capital plan that was done years ago. So, I mean, after this, I mean, really, we are in good shape at all the buildings. Well, it's kind of just the last piece. So, I think a lot of good feedback around the finance. You know, again, I'm overly positive that we're doing the defeasances and that it can be paused and that this can be accommodated without actually going up from the baseline. So, that was, that was good. Again, you can hear multiple things, but that was the main thing that I, which is good.
Yeah.
And I, I would say, just to add, I don't know, Heather might say something about it. But at, I was very surprised at the, the farmer's market, the number of people that came up and the number of people of all different ages. I mean, literally all different ages. And I would say probably the most frequently asked thing is, when is this happening?
Right.
From the standpoint of like-
Let's get her done.
Is it, yeah, like you have this planned and it's like, whoa, hold on, there's a process and we're going through the process and we'd explain the timeline. And August 12th, when the question, tonight. So, it was good, good, really good feedback from the community all around.
Yeah, I was very impressed. I mean, I've been involved in a lot of referendums in my time and used to a lot of, you know, questioning negativity, that sort of thing. And there was virtually none, especially at the farmer's market where there was quite a few people and like I said, all ages. And we didn't necessarily wait for them to come up to us, you know, if they even kind of looked our way. We kind of motioned them in and said, you know, ask questions. This is your time. And I, they were, I was very pleasantly pleased at how well that was received. Optimistic.
We just have to be, if this moves forward or whatever, we just got to be very cautious and very sensitive that it is a community pool.
Correct. Correct.
I, if I could interject a little bit, I, I spoke to Blaze a little bit this morning about ongoing maintenance. Because like I said, I'm in the contracting business. I spent the first couple of years I was in business removing swimming pools from the residence, a few commercial ones. And by and large, swimming pools are the most expensive amenity anyone can add to their home or business or whatever. Very expensive upkeep. It's expensive, the, you know, the materials it takes to maintain them, to keep the water and everything. Very expensive. So, I mentioned to Blaze today, if it would be possible, to institute some type of annual fee through, through our, our tax, taxing authority. Very, very minimal to start like a maintenance fund for the pool. And say if, if the pool's going to be new, say you run five years before you run into any maintenance. We ran into a problem with what we have now because nobody put any money in to maintenance or anything for that pool. So, we've come to a point now where our pool is obsolete. It hasn't been maintained. Everything needs to be done all at once. So, it's, it's kind of one of those things where we ran into a, a issue with our existing pool because we can't update it enough even to make it a competitive pool anymore. So, now we have to build a new one. So, it was something that should have been looked at a long time ago. And I, I suggested that moving forward with the new pool, we institute some type of funding mechanism for future maintenance. It's not going to, it's not going to fall on the taxpayers as one big, one million or one and a half million dollar upkeep thing in five years. It, it doesn't have to be a lot of money saved. We just put $65,000 a year. In five years, you'll have three, four hundred thousand. You might not need it. But if you do have some type of major event, like a boiler goes to heck or a pump goes to heck, you've got the money in the balance to do. And with the pool, the older it gets, the more maintenance you're going to have. So, like I told Blaze this morning, if we institute it now, by the time you have a big issue, probably be five or six years down the road, you'll have money enough in that balance to start and, and be able to, to, to address your stuff before it even happens.
And Mark didn't even know he was assigned this slide, this next slide.
I was looking at Frank.
Yes, so, and, and the answer to Mark's question is absolutely, we can do something like that. So, the only caveat to that is that, so we have Fund 80 and you have levy authority and Fund 80 to levy for expenditures that are appropriate for Fund 80. So, for example, the community pool would be completely legitimate use of Fund 80 and a legitimate expense within that fund. So, you could definitely levy, you know, it could be a, a couple of thousand a year. That would then drop into fund balance in Fund 80 and be reserved for the pool maintenance and upkeep. You, you would, the, the gray area enters into the competition pool because the competition pool would be used by recreation, but it would be predominantly used by the general student population. So, what we would probably have to do there is kind of like a proration of use between Fund 80 and Fund 10.
My question for Mark's comment is, we have a monthly pass, costs $40. Can we take $10 of that, every person or something, and put it in that fund?
You can, you could do that too.
Does, does any of this then, so this wouldn't affect like money that we get from the state? You know, because if you have too much money, then the state says you don't need that much and they don't give you as much.
Well, it depends on where you fall in the aid formula. So, we're in positive tertiary. So, we actually, as we spend money, we do get reimbursed at a, a higher rate than those that are in negative tertiary. This would be completely absent from being part of the state aid formula because it would be in Fund 80.
Okay.
So, if it's in Fund 80, it's, it's, they don't even consider that as aidable.
If it was in 10, it would be the opposite.
Right.
Right, okay.
But if it's in Fund 10, then it falls under your revenue limit. So, then it compromises your ability to actually do the other things that we do.
So, is this Mark's idea, like, like idea that we're legitimately considering?
Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea. I mean, that, that's not something, I mean, that's something, so once the pool's built-
Right.
Then we have to create our Fund 80 operating budget. And then it would be a matter of what does the board want to see as far as a buildup of reserves in Fund 80 that are earmarked for the pool?
And so, if we're going to start taxing people on it, like, wouldn't that be something we want to get out of people right now?
This wouldn't be until '25-'26, '26-'27.
I wouldn't even call it a tax.
Yeah, I mean, so it's still-
That's a user fee.
It's a user fee.
So, it would be a user fee more like what Frank's talking, I guess I'm-
Yep, Frank's is talking more of a user fee. That would be done through our recreation rates and, and program setting. The other option would be through a levy. So, that would be establishing what amount we would want to have in a Fund 80 levy. Right now, we just have a Fund 80 levy that includes a school resource officer and that's all. So, that would be adding to that and, you know, obviously there'd be justification for it. But that wouldn't happen. I mean, we're not, the pool's not even, may not even, yeah.
You have to pass it.
Right, yeah. So, that, that conversation would be something that'd be part of the Fund 80 levy. We probably wouldn't talk about that for two years from now or until it's done.
But user fees could, and we could certainly add on user fees, like you had mentioned Frank, as far as-
I assume user fees, like, I mean, that one makes sense. I'm just concerned, but like the tag, I understand it's in the future, but like the whole idea of a tax levy. Like, that could change how some people view it if that's something we're seriously considering, but I guess, I know I'm putting the cart people in the corner.
But that brings us to some of the questions that were brought up too, as far as staffing and how that is managed. A lot of the staff that are at the pool right now are staff that we hire through Fund 80. The lifeguards, the instructors, the supervisors. And it, we base it on the programs that are being offered there. So, if we offer more programs, we have more staff, we charge a user fee for those programs. Our parent and child lessons, open swim, lap swim, all those things. So, we can staff it up or down based on the programs that we offer and the fees that we charge for it. We, I did some comps. For us, right now, we have about 26 employees in the, for the pool, two of which are full-time staff with other responsibilities. Ten instructors, 12 lifeguards. Cudahy has a pool that is a warm water pool and a competitive pool in two locations. They have a full-time program manager, about 42 staff. But all of those people are paid out of Fund 80 as well. Our directive has always been that we're self-sustaining. We started out with a tax levy and slowly built the programs up for Oak Creek Rec as a self-sustaining program. So, the staffing of the programming that would go on there would be paid for out of user fees. However, the operational costs, like the custodians, the plan is that there wouldn't be an additional custodian. And that was a question, is like, how many more custodians do we need? The same custodians that take care of the pool now would be taking care of the pool in the new location, two of them. The chemical costs, that's not my area of expertise, but there are two pools instead of one pool. So, there would be more chemical use. We did talk about boilers. Right now, we have one big boiler and it runs year round to heat the pool. And it's in the building. It's, so we have a, a boiler to heat the pool and then an air conditioner that has to work extra heavy duty because we're heating the building with this boiler. So, we would have dedicated boilers to help with efficiency as well, but the boilers would be in that pool area. So, those all would be costs, but some efficiencies would be found along the way as well.
Heather, question, reading a lot about this too, depending on budget and how it comes in, after, if the project obviously passes. But solar wise, could we utilize, is there a benefit for like any grants or anything on, at least on the smaller pool side versus a larger available?
That's, that's something we're looking into, having solar on top of the building itself. Yep, to help off, to fray the energy costs and whatnot.
I know Steve brought it up, but it was a while ago, but I didn't know if there was a grant or, depending on the budget, if it comes in under that, we could afford that, but something to maybe consider.
Yeah, lots of opportunities right now that didn't exist 62 years ago too. And then expanded pool programming, people were wondering what else could they do in the pool? What else would they do? The warm water pool would be a great place for Aqua Fitness classes, senior fit classes, therapy classes, parent and child classes because that temperature of the pools are different. The warm water pool would be set about 90, 92 degrees. And the cool pool is 82 and a half degrees. So, that is, this is significant difference, especially for those younger swimmers. But seniors as well, being able to get into the pool. So, those would be things that would be specifically designed for the community use. People were wondering too about the community use of, of the competition pool. That would be a lot like what they have right now at the pool. So, after the men's and women's swim teams are done, or if I had classes are done at the end of the day, then we have access to that in the evening. And in the summer, we have access to it all summer long. So, those kinds of things come into play, but they were wondering about when do they get to use the competition pool? The great thing is that we would be able to use it. And because we have 10 lanes instead of eight lanes, we would be able to, excuse me, eight lanes instead of six lanes, we would be able to use more of the pool more efficiently with lap swim or even like triathlon training, that kind of thing.
All right. And then just as a reminder of the project timeline, so as eloquently as Steve Shoner put it last time in terms of the buckets, we're kind of in the pre-resolution phase. By August 12th, and the board will vote on the resolution. So, we'll move into that in just a few minutes, discussion about that. And then, once we, we get past the resolution, then we're, we get into the, the kind of that second bucket that Steve was talking about, the post-resolution slash pre-referendum phase. So, August 12th, November 5th, there'll be more information sharing, there'll be more information sessions, a little more targeted. Obviously with different ways of communicating through their mailers and emails and videos and social media. The community presentations, we've had groups that have requested that we come out and speak to them. We even spoke to a couple of residents that made some suggestions in terms of groups, as well as getting into some of our senior housing and speaking to them as well. So, those were all great suggestions as well and getting with the farmer's market. So, that's where we're at.
Heather, could you, I mean, I know there was a, somebody had brought up earlier about the use of the track. And I know we've opened the track back up. And what kind of, you know, can you give us some idea of how things have been going in that department so far since the track's been open?
And on the July 29th, and we close Saturday use and just have Sunday use because of activities that are going on in the, in the, on the turf. But the, the response has been good. We've had about, on a good day, probably 30 people that were walking. The comment about, like, yes, we did have dogs. So, now we don't have dogs. We don't have strollers. We don't have anything with wheels on them to keep that turf good. But people are using it, which is great.
Yeah, yeah. I was there Saturday. There's quite a few people there. So, it's nice to see.
It's nice when the weather works to our favor too.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions? All right, review, budget hearing, annual meeting?
We, we need to talk about the resolution.
Oh, sorry, resident, go ahead.
So, the resolution's up there and I know that you received this last Thursday and that. So, I guess I'm opening it up for questions or comments or feedback that you have with regards to the preparation of this resolution. And we will take notes on any suggestions that you may have and go back with this. Again, it's just a reminder that our next board meeting, which you would vote on this, will be August 12th. So, we need to get this ready for that so that we can then, based on the board's vote, be able to move forward then to get it prepared in time for the November 5th election.
Well, I would like to see that the word community pool be the first line item or like in, set in front of competition pool. Because I feel real strongly that, and that was a comment that was heard over and over and over again at all of the things that we went to is, you know, our lack of a community pool. So, that, I would like that in front of a competition pool. And then the word weight room, I think, has a connotation of being just for the football players. So, maybe something along the lines of strength and conditioning room or strength and conditioning area.
Fitness, fitness.
Yeah.
It's a fitness room, but it is a weight room.
Well, it is, but, but it's, you have to look at what people, you know, if they're thinking everything's just for football, then that will turn them off.
But weightlifting room, I can tell you that there's, there's boys and girls all involved with that.
I know there is, but I'm talking about, it's, not everybody sees that, so.
So Mark's idea, when, when will we come back with that if that's gonna, because that's gonna change us?
Why would this change it?
Well, I mean, just saying, because, I mean, how the parking lot differ, is it, you know, I'm asking, so I don't know, is that gonna change us at all with that?
So you're voting on the, you'll be the total package of that, so, um, so, again, we don't have the numbers yet, we won't have them for some time and that, but, uh, you know, basically, this resolution, what, what Mark's proposing, everything's gonna be done within the context of this resolution, the dollar amount.
So his has some other.
That's why I put in there not to exceed, because you're not agreeing to thirty-four million, you're just saying you're not gonna exceed.
See thirty-four.
So it comes in at twenty million, you're good, it comes in at twenty-seven million, you're good.
I just wanted to make sure, so.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I insisted on having not to exceed, and that way you're not set at thirty-four million, whoever the contractor is, you're saying, well, they want to spend thirty-four million. This way, it's not to exceed thirty-four million, so we can cut and paste whatever way we want, all the way up to the final, final number.
Yep, this resolution will accommodate both ways.
Yep.
And we'll continue to work with the city to at least have it, so that if we need that parking, we'll have that set up too.
But we have to be sensitive with those trees.
Yes, yep.
And we've looked at several options in which, for parking there, that, uh, would be the less disruptive in terms of having to remove any trees. So I've heard, just for, there's no other feedback. Cheryl's response about moving community pool in front of competition pool in, in terms of the wording, and then, uh, the possibility of wordsmithing weight room either into some sort of strength and conditioning or fitness room or something like that. Any other pieces of feedback from the board on this?
I thought it was very well-written, I thought it was not, a lot of these things can be very confusing, and this was pretty, uh, pretty well-spelled out, so.
So we will, uh, take this back, we'll work with, uh, Steve and Allison, who's helped us write this.
Well, I was just gonna, gonna say, I think, um, I think if we wanted to change the word weight room, I mean, we're in the weight here, but I think a fitness room would bring a lot more questions than answers.
I agree, I think like aerobics.
Yes, I think people would, well, what is that for, does the community get to use that, but, you know what I'm saying? So I think you have to be careful about. You don't want to create more questions when they're reading it than answers, so. You could just call it a team weight room, so that team is.
A school weight room.
School weight room, like, so that's. I mean, because I understand the connotations involved in that, Cheryl, but in my mind, it does answer what, I know what it's, you know what I'm saying, it, so.
Yeah.
All right, so we will bring, we'll take this back, and we'll, uh, work at, uh, looking at some of these, uh, these couple of recommendations, and then we will bring this back on August 12th for your approval.
All right.
Thank you.
Uh, budget hearings and annual meeting agendas?
Uh, these are just the, uh, just to give you the agendas that will be posted, uh, around the annual meeting and budget hearing, that'll be scheduled for August 26th. So we just bring those forward, show them, you saw earlier tonight, the, the budget publications itself. So we are all geared up and getting ready for that annual meeting presentation.
Are the, um, salaries for the board, are those the same as what they've been?
Um, I believe currently, uh, we have the motion to equal what it currently is, we would need someone to.
No, I'm fine with, I, I wanted it left that way, I wanted it the same.
I think last year was the old one.
It was opposite.
Yeah, but we have it match what it is currently, but again, if anyone wants to make a motion different, they can do it that night.
Yep. All right, any other questions? Hey, wanna go to the donations?
Sure. This is just an update on the la- the fourth quarter of, of the school year, fiscal year, uh, the donations that were made. Lot of donations, we actually, uh, recorded all the ones that came through for the team meeting room. We also, uh, pushed for principals to kind of be more aware, uh, because what we saw last quarter was, you know, you, you do have a number of schools that have nothing in there year-to-date, well, there clearly is donations, we're just not capturing them. So we're gonna push that again, uh, in the nightlight for the new school year, um, just to start making sure that we get everything in, because this looks like there's inequities, and there's gonna be inequities. I mean, it's just gonna happen, but they're not as drastic as it looks, because I know that Deerfield had gotten something. Same thing with Cedar Hills.
Are you speaking of like PTO donations?
Any donations, yeah, PTO, like for, in Edgewood's case here, this was a PTO donation of a piece of equipment, of playground equipment, but I know there was more than that throughout the year.
As the Edgewood PTO treasurer, um, I feel like I should mention that I don't know what I'm supposed to be giving you. So it may be something that you may want to start contracting schools at the beginning of the year, like directly to their PTOs, to be like, here's what.
More important than the PTOs is the principal, because the principal deals with PTOs, deals with the churches, deals with everyone that impacts their building. So I think that was kind of the gap in information or knowledge, or potentially just, you know, they get busy with everything else, this might be the last thing they really think of, but it's something that for the board's knowledge and the community's knowledge, that people are, get acknowledged, is important.
Can we get an update, um, with this to see, you know, what every school has done, or is this like?
This is, yeah, because I don't want them to go back in time, but going forward, we're obviously continuing this, but I'm gonna put an emphasis on the principals to get that, collect that information. So when they know something's coming in, here's the form, fill this out, because Meredith, you're right, there's a number of PTOs that don't even know the form exists, and that's kind of something the principal needs to be on top of, uh, with their office staff to, hey, you're donating this, here's the form, just complete this, that way we can document it and have it acknowledged.
I guess I would like to see an updated, because that's how you can, like, tell what's happening, you know, I mean, if all of a sudden some school's raising a hundred thousand dollars, you know, does that send red flags, you know, that kind of a thing.
PTOs are gonna argue though, that, like, we're our own 501(c) year, whoever, like, I don't have to give you anything.
Right.
To be honest, like, I mean, I'm not here, I'm telling you, I didn't give you anything, but I also, I mean, it's, we're, we went through a whole big thing at Edgewood where I know my Edgewood PTO rights. Blaze can back me up on that.
Oh, that's good, to be a 501(c) three, yeah.
So high school high because of the.
Yes, the team, yep, yep.
And also, just for the record, they're all volunteers, I'm not going back. I'll go on record, but I'll start next year.
Yes, we will.
But like, that's falls on the principal, you know.
Yep, and it's on us, uh, at district office to work with the principals, make sure that they understand the expectations with, with newer principals coming online, we're gonna, that'll be one of the first things we share with them.
All right, any other questions? Upcoming agendas?
So, uh, as a reminder, July 29th, we have our school board work study, uh, for the purposes of interviewing school board vacancy candidates, the deadline for potential new board members to submit their two required documents to our district office is July 18th. And then on August 12th, uh, the action item, which we just got done speaking about and just a few minutes ago, was the approval of the pool resolution, and then information items, you'll have the emergency care guidelines for twenty-four, twenty-five school year and June board financial report. It looks like a light agenda for August 12th, but there may be some things added, um, over the course of the next month.
Do we know how many candidates so far have put in?
Three officially. Two officially, I'm sorry.
All right, any other questions? The motion to adjourn?
The Nikki moves to adjourn.
Give me a real second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All saying aye, thank you everyone, have a good night.